Called a regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council for Monday, March 17, 2025 to order. At this time, I'd ask if you would all rise and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of any test or error.
Clerk Tamer, please call the robe.
Jensen.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Nudera.
Here.
Bastido.
Here.
Nardini.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Erby.
Here.
Bellinger.
Here.
Veremis.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Schenko.
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent. We have a quorum, item three on the agenda, public forum. Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed up this evening to speak at public forum?
No one's signed in.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make public comment but did not have an opportunity to sign up in advance? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to rewritten communications. Is there anyone in the audience that has a written communication that he or she would like to deliver to the council? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements. Are there any announcements from the dais? Clerk Tamer?
Early voting began today in council chambers here at City Hall for the consolidated election. Voting hours are Monday through Sunday, weekdays, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and weekends, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Residents should be receiving their mail-in ballots. I confirmed today they're being mailed out today, this morning, from the county, so they should be in your mailboxes hopefully very soon this week. April 1st is our election day in two weeks from tomorrow. That is District 205 spring break, so make your plan early to vote, mail in ballot, or come in early to vote before you leave on your spring break. Also, the City of Elmhurst Commission on Youth is hosting their annual Teen and Job and Volunteer Fair this Wednesday, the 19th, at York in the Commons area. The event is free and no registration is required. And then finally, the Commission on Youth is accepting nominations for the Exemplary Youth Service Award. You can go to the City of Elmhurst website under Youth Commission, and there's nomination information there. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Toledo.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of Immaculate Conception Grade School and Parish, I wanted to encourage all of the aldermen and city officials. You received an invitation to attend the 125th anniversary civic open house. The parish and the school is very happy to host members of the community for that. Show off the school. Some students are preparing some little speeches to give. And, I mean, 125 years of any kind of a community institution, I think, is quite an accomplishment. So, please, that is on Thursday, March 27th, 9:00 to 11:00 in the morning. If you can make it, they would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo. Alderman Park?
Our Illinois Representative Deuter asked me to share from the Elmhurst branch of the American Association of University Women that the association is now accepting applications for three $4,500 scholarships for women in need of financial assistance to continue their education at the graduate or undergrad level. The deadline to apply is April 15th, and the women must be 23 years or older and residents of Elmhurst, Addison, Bensville, Berkeley, Northlake, Oak Brook, Oak Brook Terrace, or Villa Park, and they must have already completed 12 credit hours at a community or undergraduate college or university. And they can be full or part-time students. And for an application or more information, you can just go to elmhurstarea, all one word, dash IL dot AAUW dot net. And then there'll be a phone number where you can call to confirm receipt of your submission once you have filled out the forms online.
Thank you, Alderman Park. Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor. Have an update on my employment that affects my ability to serve with no appearance of a conflict of interest. As of Monday, I no longer work at the Elmhurst American Legion, and therefore, there's no problem with those conflicts of interest that could have arisen from that, even though I wasn't on a board or any of that. So, no longer getting paid, no longer representing them in any fashion. So, I just want to make a public statement of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Erby. Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I was reminded today as I was driving my children to practice that it's a new season in Elmhurst. It's a, the warm weather has created the children on electric scooters and e-bike season in Elmhurst. So, with that being said, I hope we have a chance as parents, members of the community, to have talks with our children who might have those items, remind them to do their best to be safe operators of those vehicles as we move into warmer weather and are out and about on the streets. Thanks.
All right. I think we're setting a record for announcements. Anyone else? All right. Thank you all. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Before we, I ask Clerk Tamer to read that, I'm going to remove 6.1 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. We will bring that back at the next meeting. Clerk Tamer, would you read the remainder of the consent agenda, please?
6.2, executive session minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on February 18th, 2025. 6.3, accounts payable, March 17th, 2025. 6.4, report, visitation Catholic Church and school conditional use permit for preliminary and final planned unit development with site development allowances, 779 South York. 6.5, report, Elmhurst Walk-in Assistance Network Q for a Cause fundraiser. 6.6, report, North Avenue Maple Avenue left turn restrictions. 6.7, report, motor fuel tax, general maintenance section resolution. 6.8, report, Elma Avenue reconstruction and Elm Park Avenue resurfacing project construction bids. 6.9, report, 2025 tree purchase and planting program. 6.10, report, DuPage County gasoline and diesel procurement joint purchase. 6.11, report, 2025 asphalt rejuvenation program. 6.12, report, 2025 crack ceiling and seal coating program. 6.13, report, 2025 concrete pavement patching program. 6.14, report, purchase of one Ford F-350 and one Ford F-550. 6.15, report, one Ford Expedition SSV. 6.16, report, 2025 sanitary sewer and manhole rehabilitation, construction engineering services. 6.17, 2025 pavement strip, um, stripping program, uh, striping program, sorry. 6.18, report, professional engineering services agreement for NPDES, permit special conditions compliance assistance. 6.19, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement by and between the Spring Road Business Association and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 6.20, an ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the execution of a contract for aggregate material supply services. 6.21, an ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the execution of a contract for debris removal services. 6.22, an ordinance reserving and authorizing the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues and related matters. 6.23, a resolution approving the 2025 community grant recommendations and awarding the community grants. 6.24, a resolution approving and authorizing a distribution of funds from the Special Tax Allocation Fund for the North York Street Tax Increment Financing District of the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties. 6.25, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the City of Elmhurst and Kennig, Lindgren, O'Hara, Abuna, Inc. for the Neighborhood Traffic Study, Area Number 7. 6.26, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional material testing engineering services agreement with Construction and Geo-Technical Material Testing, Inc. for the 2025 contract paving program. 6.27, a resolution to approve the funding for the Phase II traffic signal modernization improvements along the Illinois 64 corridor, Contract 62 N33, State Section Number 2020 dash 263 dash S U R. 6.28, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement and release by and between the City of Elmhurst, Illinois and Jolly Wells for the resolution of a civil litigation.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. City Attorney, would you provide the council with a, and the public with a summary of 628, because that was not posted on our website?
Sure, Mayor. This lawsuit involved a federal court case filed by plaintiff Jolly Wells against Elmhurst Police Officer and the city. It arose by virtue of a traffic incident stop on North Avenue, and one of our officers assisted in that traffic stop. The settlement amount is for this, for a full release without any admission of any guilt whatsoever on the part of the city or its officer in the amount of $5,000.
And I think the council would like for me to tell the public that this is very much a nuisance value to save attorney's fees. With that, may, is there any item on the consent agenda that any item, any alderman would like to remove, either to vote against or further discussion? Alderman Nardini?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, 6.4.
6.4. Alderman Hill?
Thank you, 6.3.
Alderman Bellinger?
6.6.
Alderman Erby?
6.7.
Is there any one that wants to leave anything on the consent agenda? Alderman Nudera?
6.17.
6.17. All right. Then I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 6.1, 6.3, 6.4, 6.6, 6.7, and 6.17. Alderman Bellinger with the motion. Alderman Jensen with the second. Clerk Tamer?
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Schenko?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. The consent agenda minus the items noted passes. I will move on to item 6.3. Clerk Tamer?
6.3, accounts payable, March 17th, 2025.
Thank you. May I have a motion to put 6.3, approval of the council bill, before the council? Okay, Alderman Toledo. Alderman Nudera with the second. Alderman Toledo?
I defer to whoever pulled this.
All right, Alderman Hill?
Was it me? I am pulling this item because I would like to vote present on it as it contains an item for my employer, so as not to appear in conflict, I will be voting present.
Right, again, it's not a legal conflict, but we, it's noted. All right. Anyone else on item 6.3? Clerk Tamer?
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill?
Present.
Schenko?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one present.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one present. 6.3, the accounts payable is approved. 6.4, Clerk Tamer?
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the City Council approve the request for conditional use permit for the preliminary and final planned unit development with one-site development allowance for wall signage at the property commonly known as 779 South York Street, Elmhurst, Illinois. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for City Council approval. Signed, Chair Alderman Chris Jensen and Vice Chair Alderman Jennifer Veremis. Absent Alderman Fifth Ward Tina Park.
All right. May I have a motion to put the report on 6.4 with the council? Alderman Jensen with the motion. Alderman Veremis with the second. Alderman Jensen?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a report for a planned unit development at Visitation Catholic Church. I defer to the alderman that pulled it.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I am in complete support of this. I only pulled it because I wanted to acknowledge that Father John and Father Ryan are here tonight, and they've been visitation churches in the Sixth Ward since before any of us can ever remember, and look forward to the new and exciting work, and congratulations on 70 years of ministry. Thank you very much.
Additional discussion? Clerk Tamer?
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Schenko?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, and the report, 6.4, is approved. 6.6, Clerk Tamer?
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee that the additional traffic control signage at the North Avenue Maple Avenue intersection be placed and that the appropriate ordinance be drafted and adopted by the City Council, prohibiting left turns and through movements at North Avenue from northbound and southbound Maple Avenue, and that the city attorney be authorized to prepare the necessary documents, including any municipal code changes, for City Council approval. Signed, Alderman Michael Brennan, Chair, Alderman Jacob Hill, Vice Chair, and Alderman Guido Nardini.
Thank you. May I have a motion to put 6.6, the report, before the council for approval? Alderman Brennan with the motion. Alderman Hill with the second. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this report is actually a result of a referral that came in from Alderman Deuter at the time, and Jennifer Veremis. It's related to the intersection of North Avenue and Maple, where there's been significant accidents. And so, because North Avenue is regulated by IDOT, there's a lot of coordination work that we're doing with them. This report is, allows us to move forward with something as we collaborate with IDOT, and that something is to regulate, you know, left-hand turns onto North Avenue from Maple. So, we wanted to do something now and not wait and do something holistically, because we do think that, you know, this will, will improve some of the safety, more safety measures are going to be taken as we work with IDOT. I'll yield to the alderman that pulled it.
All right, thank you. Alderman Bellinger?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chair. I pulled this, I'm full support of this. I want to thank the committee. I want to thank the city staff for pulling the reports and all the information together for your quick action on this. I think this is an important issue, and I appreciate how quickly it moved. I did want to pull it to kind of further your comment on the IDOT piece, that this is addressing an immediate concern on Maple, but to some concerns that I've received from, from my neighbors and my constituents, and I know Alderman Veremis has received as well, about adjacent streets being impacted by changes on North Avenue itself. I want to just point out that I appreciate you guys considering that in the report to IDOT, and that that is something that is still being worked on. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Clerk Tamer?
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Schenko?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. And the report, 6.4, is approved. 6.6, Clerk Tamer?
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Buildings Committee that the City Council approve the enclosed resolution to appropriate MFT funds for the 2025 general maintenance section and authorize approval for the expenditure of funds, and that the city attorney be authorized to prepare the appropriate City Council documents. Signed, Alderman Emily Bastido, Chair, Alderman Michael Bram, and Alderman Schenko. Absent Alderman Brian P. Cahill, Vice Chair.
All right. Can I have a motion to put report 6.7 before the council? Alderman Bastido, second Alderman Cahill. Anything, Alderman Bastido?
No, I defer to the alderman who pulled this.
All right. Alderman Erby?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chair. I read the report, had some questions on it, and I wanted to possibly see if we could reconcile back to the budget discussions, where we, I think we briefly touched on this during budget discussion, and I'm not sure if it relates back to this report, but this is a change in policy. From my reading of the report, as, you know, prima facie here, is we're changing our policy from the way we used to do it to the way we're doing it now with the receipt of the motor fuels tax. These funds apparently will now go to additional road salt purchasing, maybe all-new, I'm not sure if that's additional, it just says including. Streetlight electricity, which, as far as I know, the majority, if not all, of the street lighting is, is paid for under the franchise agreement with ComEd, so I'm not sure how that goes. Maybe there's a reconcili, some, excuse me, reconciliation there. I think asphalt material purchasing, that sounds on track. Ditch maintenance, I was a little unsure of how ditch maintenance goes in, and then, of course, et cetera means, you know, whatever that is. So, could be a host of items. So, if we could speak to that briefly, I would, not against it, I just want to make sure I understand this policy change that is occurring.
All right. Alderman Bastido?
Thank you. I will defer to, to the city manager for more details, but I apologize, I did not know this was being pulled, so I wasn't prepared to answer the detailed questions. But I do believe it was discussed during the budget season, and I think it has something to do with the fact that in the past salaries were paid from this, and they no longer are. But I defer to city manager.
City manager?
Alderman Bram?
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Alderman.
Alderman Bram?
No, I was just going to say that I appreciate Alderman Erby's comments on this, but this report, or recommendation report, has nothing to do with the policy change, as Alderman Bastido already mentioned. It is my understanding we discussed this during the budget cycle on what we utilize the MFT funds for, but this report, this recommendation, is not relevant to how we're spending the MFT funds, and that was discussed previously.
Clerk Alderman Bram, city manager?
I'm, I'm looking at Director Coyle, of course, but as I understand this, we're moving away from labor costs to commodity costs, and that was a recommendation of IDOT because the labor gets complicated when we use the MFT dollars for that. And so, we have in the past, but we're now making that switch. Therefore, IDOT requires this resolution so that we expressly state what we're going to use the, the funds for.
And city manager, are we paying for street lighting out of this?
We are. The street lighting is not part of the franchise agreement. Buildings that we're in are part of the franchise agreement, and that's where the, the no-cost electricity comes from, I would call it, not free, it's in everybody's bill, but that's, that does not relate to the streetlights, though. So, we do have to pay for that. It's at a very, very low rate that ComEd sets, region-wide.
Very good. Anything further, Alderman Erby?
No, I just want to make sure I had a clarity from the budget discussions to this point, that this, there, it appears Alderman Bram is spot-on, and that they are not related. And would you confer with that city manager? That's completely, there, there's no intersection between those that's material.
I would say no intersection, we're talking about IDOT. Go ahead.
Well, I mean, they're all related in the sense that they come from the budget, but I think I would agree with Alderman Bram on that.
All right, thank you.
All right, additional discussion? I think we're ready to vote, then. Clerk Tamer?
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Schenko?
Aye.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay, I'm with you on that. Zero absent. 6.7 passes. We're on to 6.17. Please read the report. Clerk Tamer?
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Buildings Committee that the unit price bid for Maintenance Coatings Company for the 2025 pavement striping program not to exceed the budget amount of $50,000, of $60,000 to be accepted, and the city attorney be authorized to prepare a resolution approving a contract with Maintenance Coatings. Signed, Alderman Emily Bastido, Chair, Alderman Michael Bram, and Alderman Schenko. Absent Alderman Brian P. Cahill, Vice Chair.
All right. Asking for a motion to put 6.17 before the council for approval. Alderman Bastido, second Alderman Cahill. Alderman Bastido?
I defer to, I believe it was Alderman Nudera who pulled this?
Alderman Nudera.
Apparently, on my board docs, I don't have any signatures, and that's why I pulled it.
Oh.
Yeah. So, that's the reason.
Was the report signed, Alderman Chair Bastido?
Yes. We did sign it.
Yes.
Maybe the draft got uploaded instead of the final.
All right, if you'll pass your screen over, we will sign your. I think I will allow it to proceed with the representation that in fact it was signed, although the copy was not put. Did everyone sign it?
Alderman Cahill was not present, but the other three.
All right, so we had three signatures, and Alderman Cahill, that was because of an absence, not because of a disagreement with the report.
Correct.
All right, well, thank you, Alderman Nudera. We'll get the signed report in, but we will proceed on the report. Any further discussion? All right. Thank you. Clerk Tamer?
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Aye.
Veremus?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, zero absent.
All right. Fourteen ayes, zero nays. The, the report 6.17 passes. We move on to on jet item 7.1, Mayor Levin. I have two items. I want to thank Jim O'Connor and the entire St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee. I see one of its members out there in the audience. All the volunteers and supporters for an excellent parade on March 8th. I'd like to also thank all the city staff, police, fire, public works, communications involved in making it a very safe and happy day in Elmhurst. This event is no small task, as we know Jim O'Connor's committee, you have hundreds of hours to the community so that we can all celebrate together. Thanks again, and we'll see everyone on March 7, 2026. Next, I'd like to congratulate the Finance Department. Be on the awarding of the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the City of Elmhurst for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended December 31, 2023. The report was judged by an impartial panel to meet the high stand, make sure we met the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive, constructive spirit of full disclosure that fully communicates Elmhurst's financial story and motivates potential users and user groups to read the report. This certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental reporting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. This is the 35th year in a row that the City of Elmhurst has received this award, so congratulations Director Coyle and the entire Finance Department. That's what I have for today. City manager?
Thank you. A few items today. I want to remind all the residents of the annual spring cleanup. It's coming up, which does not include yard waste, but all other matters, just about all matters, that if you properly prepare, and you can put out on your collection day, the full list of items that are acceptable and not acceptable are on the website, so please take a look at that. The pickup dates for 2025 are Saturday, April 12th, for residents who have Wednesday collection date, Saturday, April 26th, for residents who have a Thursday collection date, and Saturday, May 3rd, for residents who have a Friday collection day. Another item is that city vehicle stickers are available for purchase online and at City Hall. Those are required and must be purchased and displayed by May 1st on all vehicles registered or garaged within city limits. New this year, as Alderman Hill reminded us last meeting, is that the city is offering a Veterans and Active Duty Military Discount Vehicle sticker for $1. There are some qualifications for that, including proof of veteran or active duty status. It's one sticker per individual, and it's for motorcycles, passenger vehicles, recreational vehicles, and trucks weighing less than 4,800 pounds. And finally, the Tollway is continuing to work on the 294 project, and as part of that, currently, they are doing some demolition, and that has been affecting residents on the east side of town, the community near Valette and I-290. So, that's overnight work, and they are demolishing bridge and pavement. That has generated an increased noise in the neighboring residential areas, and the City of Elmhurst does not have, does not have a direct control over the project, but we are in contact with the Tollway folks to let them know. There is two ways that you can register comments or concerns. There's an email, which is 294TRISTATE. That's the numbers 294, then the word TRISTATE, at getipass.com. This will be on the city website, or you can also call the construction hotline at 630-246-2930. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item 7.2 on the agenda is just for information. It's a report of the status of matters that have been referred to various committees. If you have any questions on those, please let me know. Other business? Is there any other business to be brought before the council this evening? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Hill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Thank you all.